7:30 for the regularly scheduled Village Board meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Blankensap.
Here.
Trustee Boltis.
Here.
Trustee Taglia.
Here.
Trustee Case.
Here.
Trustee Bowwinkle.
Here.
President Colleton.
Here. And if we could all please rise for the pledge. Fetus, how'd you like to lead us in the pledge today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could all remain standing. Trustee Taglia, could you please lead us in a prayer?
Certainly. Our heavenly Father will be pleased to grant that this meeting thus begun in order, be conducted in peace, and closed in harmony. Amen.
All right. If you're not familiar with how our meetings run, first item on the agenda is our public participation on agenda items, specific items that are from Item 1 all the way to Item 20. If you have something to speak on, on the Committee of the Whole, that is a separate meeting, and each of those items are allowed to speak at individual times during that meeting. So, and if you have nothing to say about either one of the agendas, there's a time for that as well, which is at the end of this first part of the meeting. So if you have something to speak about on agenda items, come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and if you could please keep your comments to three minutes. Anybody from the public got an agenda item? All right, seeing none. Item 2, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
Second the motion.
All right. Questions or comments from the board on the approval of the agenda?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
I'd like to make a motion to remove Item 11 from the Committee of the Whole agenda.
All right. We have a motion to remove Item 11 from the Committee of the Whole. Do I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Boltis?
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments? What do we have to do?
Well, we need a vote on the...
Removal of 11?
Motion to remove 11.
All right. Can I have, first, before we have a motion to approve the agenda, can I have a motion, can I have a roll call to remove Item 11 from the COW? Roll call to remove Item 11 from the COW?
Trustee Taglia?
No.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
No.
Trustee Case?
No.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blankensap?
Yes.
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
President Colleton.
No. All right. Can I have a roll call on the approval of the agenda, please? Or do we go through any more? Are there any more questions or comments on approval of the agenda? All right. Can I have a roll call to approve the agenda, please?
Trustee Blankensap?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 3 is consent agenda. A, approved minutes of the January 24, 2011 executive session. B, approved minutes of February 14, 2011 executive session. C, approved minutes of February 28, 2011 Village Board meeting. D, approved minutes of March 7, 2011 budget meeting. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
Make a motion for the consent agenda.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia?
Second.
Questions or comments from the board on Items A through D? I have a quick comment. I'd like to thank all of you for doing such a great job last week at the Budget Workshop, going through the minutes. It looks like you guys went through a ton on the agenda and got some very good question and answers and responses. So, thank you very much. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blankensap?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blankensap?
Yes.
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 5, second reading of an ordinance approving PZ-08-0014 various tax amendments to Appendix C basic zoning ordinance relative to title loans, payday loans, pawn shops, and currency exchanges, and petition PZ-10-0010 various tax amendments to Appendix C basic zoning ordinance relative to cash for gold stores, Village of Villa Park petitioner. Can I have a motion for the second reading?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia?
I'll move for the second reading.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Boltis?
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Real quick, as the board has gone through, and I know we've had many discussions on this, while we're at second reading, is there anything that anybody else would like to add, or anything that anybody deems necessary to change? I know we, this is where we're at now. All right. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
No.
Trustee Blankensap?
Yes.
Trustee Boltis?
No.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 6, second reading of ordinance approving petition PZ-10-0009 tax amendments to Appendix C basic zoning ordinance relative to scrap metal recycling, Village of Villa Park petitioner. Can I have a motion for the second reading?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
Make a motion for the second reading.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Case?
Second.
Questions or comments from the board on the second reading? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blankensap?
Yes.
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 7, first reading of an ordinance amending Section 9-313A of Chapter 9, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Villa Park Municipal Code. My personal feeling on this, I've talked to a couple of the trustees, I would like more information on this, so I'm hoping I could get somebody to actually table this item till we get more information. I know we're going through in the COW some building codes as well, but I would like to involve some more and possibly have a sit-down with the chief prior to bringing this up to the board. So if I could get a motion to table?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia?
I'll move to table Item 7.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
I'll second the motion.
All right.
Mr. President.
Trustee Boltis?
Does this have to do, can we have discussion if there's a motion to table?
Sure.
This section, does this have to do with the codes for the sprinkler, or does this have to do with the ambulance fees?
This has to do with the sprinkler codes, correct?
I believe it.
That's my understanding, is it's the sprinkler codes.
So, first reading on this, I believe, serves the ambulance billing.
Are we sure? Because I don't have, I don't have any paperwork on it. That's why I assumed it was the sprinkler. I go from...
It is the ambulance fees, so...
No, it is the ambulance fees, it's not the sprink, I assumed it was the sprinkler, because I go from the scrap metal recycling in here to a resolution revising my admission rates for my paperwork, so I assumed it was the sprinkler codes. Okay. So if all we're doing is the, so this just has to do with the ambulance fees, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. With that, I'll withdraw my table. Or trustee...
Is it permissible to withdraw?
Whoever made the motion in the second can withdraw.
Okay. I'll withdraw my motion if that's accurate information.
Okay. Trustee Bowwinkle, would you withdraw your second?
Yes.
Okay. So then I would need a motion for the first reading.
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
I'd like to make a motion for the first reading.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Boltis?
Second.
Okay. Sorry about that, chief. I thought this was the sprinkler codes, because I didn't have any, anything in front of me on it. All right. Any questions or comments from the board on the fees for the ambulance? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blankensap?
Yes.
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 8, first reading of an ordinance amending Section 3-313 of Chapter 3, Alcohol Liquor, to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses. Can I have a motion on the first reading?
Mr. President.
Trustee Boltis?
Motion for first reading.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Blankensap?
Second the motion.
Questions or comments from the board? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Blankensap?
Yes.
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
No.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 9, resolution approving increasing swimming pool rates for the 2011 season. Can I have a motion on the resolution?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
Make a motion for the resolution.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Case?
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blankensap?
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 10, resolution authorizing a redevelopment agreement for the request for TIF funds for the proposed Dunkin' Donuts at 743 West North Avenue, Dennis Krab. Did I say it right? All right. Franchisee and petitioner, can I have a motion for the resolution?
Mr. President.
Trustee Blankensap?
Make a motion for the resolution.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Case?
Second.
Manager Page, if you'd like to speak to this real quick?
There are some minor changes to the agreement before you this evening, changing a few of the dates in terms of completion, and some clarification of language on fee reimbursements. And we can walk through those individually with the board. Schubra could walk through those individually, so you would be clear on what those changes are this evening. These were last-minute kind of negotiations with the owner coming up with some additional concerns, so we wanted to, we wanted to keep this document on the agenda to move forward, but at the same time wanted you to be aware of the changes that we have here.
And these changes were happening about an hour ago, so that's why you have the hard copies in front of you. Since the agenda item was taken off the agenda from the last meeting, they wanted to change the dates to reflect the time lag and to just give them a little bit of breathing room for the demo to start, which is changing from April 15th to May 15th, and for the completion and the certificate of occupancy, changing from August 31 to the November 1 date. The other concern that the property owner had was regarding the fees, and they wanted to be certain that the $45,000 was going to be the limit for the fees. That language has been changed in here with a caveat that if there are any other major changes to the scope of the project that are initiated by the developer, then obviously there would be additional review and fees that would apply. But at this time, the engineering review fees and the building permit fees, as has been determined, is it, was the assurance that they were looking for. If you turn to page 6, there's a question about the method of reimbursement. The applicant does not feel it necessary to submit all of the receipts to the Village Pride reimbursement, so they wanted something that refers to a maximum, up to a maximum of $45,000 is what they will submit receipts for, but they are not required to submit receipts for reimbursement beyond that. So we have referred to Exhibit C in here. One more change is that the tenant Dunkin' Donuts and the property owner are in discussions, so that there's a potential that the franchisee might purchase the property, in which case the language in Section 8.7, they just wanted to be sure that in case Dunkin' Donuts purchases the property, that there won't be any sort of approval required by the village, which we don't see necessary for the village to have to approve the purchase of that property. So, once again, a small change made, so that if it is anybody other than the tenant, then they might still need to go through the successors and the signs sections, but if it's the franchisee purchasing, then the village doesn't have any objection to that. And there was a correction, addition of another name in the owner's representation. Other than that, the agreement is what we received on Friday. And the franchisee, the majority owner, is here and has signed the draft document indicating their approval of the terms.
So we've got them locked now, right? So realistically, there's only, I mean, going forward, it's really just mostly dates that have changed and...
Clarification.
And just some clarification, but nothing extravagant, nothing major to the redevelopment agreement, and we're still on pace to get some egg sandwiches there very shortly.
Hopefully.
Good. All right. Thank you very much. And the sooner the better, Dennis, I appreciate it. All right. Any questions or comments from the board?
I have a question.
Trustee Blankensap?
So, Schubra, the last time we had this conversation, we were being asked, the village was being asked to pay up some money because of previous expenses and so forth. And now, under F, Section 4.1, it's asking, property owner agrees to pay outstanding engineering and building plan reviews, permits, et cetera, total of $45,000 prior to issuance of the building permit. So does this cover that amount of money that we were previously talking about?
Yes.
When we were being asked to pay for it, now they have agreed to pay for it?
Yeah. The way it's going to work is that they will pay the fees upfront, and then we will be not reimbursing them for the fee, but paying for the stormwater detention in about the same amount. So it'll be a wash.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
So if I'm reading this right, it looks like if all goes well and is planned, you'll be open by the end of the year at the latest?
You want me to stand up there and answer?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Come on up, Dennis. Introduce yourself to the town.
Actually...
Or Todd, sorry.
Todd Shaw. I am the majority owner of the Dunkin' Donuts and the franchisee. We will be open, we're hoping, in the latest August.
Okay.
But we just wanted to make sure if we ran into any issues, that we did have some breathing room. That was more the property owner's insistence than us as the franchisee. We don't control everything, obviously, but there's no issue sparse financing or anything like that, so we're ready to go.
All right.
So I'm hoping the latest August.
Okay.
So, fantastic.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Anything else for me?
No, I'm prepared for you when you want to be open. All right.
Thank you.
Great.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blankensap?
Yes.
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 11, you're going to take them together? Okay. Item 11, resolution authorizing joint purchase of bulk rock salt with the state of Illinois. Item 12, resolution in support of an application for funding of the North Side sidewalk project under the federal congestion mitigation and air quality improvement CMAC program. Can I have a motion to table Items 11 and 12 until after the Committee of the Whole?
Mr. President.
Trustee Blankensap?
Make a motion to table 11 and 12 until after the COW.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Roll call to table Item 11 and 12 till after the Committee of the Whole?
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blankensap?
Yes.
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 13, resolution approving employment agreement between the Village of Villa Park and the successful candidate to serve as village manager. Can I have a motion to table until after executive session, Item 13?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia?
I'll move to table Item, what is it, 13? 13.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
I'll second his motion to table Item number 13.
Questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Blankensap?
Yes.
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 14, unfinished business, none. Item 15, new business, none. Item 16, consider executive session, RE 5 ILCS 120/2C1 Personnel Matters and Collective Bargaining, and 5 ILCS 120/2C11 Litigation, and 5 ILCS 120/2C5 Land Acquisition. Can I have a motion for executives, to consider executive session?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
Make a motion to consider executive session.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Blankensap?
Second the motion for executive session.
Questions or comments from the board? Roll call vote on executive session?
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blankensap?
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. All right. Item 17, public participation on non-agenda items. Now is the time. If you have something to speak about that's not on the agenda, please come up to the dais, state your name, and if you can, keep it to three minutes. Anyone on a non-agenda item? All right. Seeing none. Item 18, reports and recommendations of elected officials. Remember, folks, we've got a huge COW, too. All right, I'll start to my right. Trustee Boltis?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia?
I'll report.
Trustee Case?
I'll report.
Trustee Davis?
One thing. Safety Commission is looking for work. We just had our meeting, it was four minutes long. We cleared our table of everything. So if Villa Park residents have anything that they think is a safety concern, please come to our next meeting, which is April 11, Tuesday, upstairs here at 7:30 PM.
It's traffic and safety, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know what I said?
No, you just said safety.
Ah, okay, yeah, traffic, add that in there. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. It's Fetus, our Director of Public Works, I prompted him. Just a couple of quick updates. If you can give us kind of a status report on where we're at with the Villa Avenue construction project, as well as what, how we're doing on the, on the bridge, what's going on there?
All right, I'll start with the bridge. We met with the railroad last week, a couple of minor issues regarding maintenance of the bridge and the width of the span. They're going to be talking to our engineers. We do not anticipate it holding up design whatsoever. Right now, they are just getting ready to submit pre-final plans to IDOT for review, so we are on schedule.
Okay.
And you'll be hearing more about our conversations with the railroad. They're making us some offers, but we'll be back on that issue.
Sounds like things are moving forward, though.
Yes, they are.
It's not stalled or anything with the Ardmore Bridge project.
Oh, no, absolutely not. ICC petition is in, so everything's underway. South Villa, you've seen the signs going up, they're starting to mobilize. They're going to be starting some of the utility work, and that's the other utilities, probably within the next week.[1493.23] Uh, next week, they're probably going to start grinding at the south end. A little change in plans, they're going to leave the business district alone for a while, and they're just going to do the south end of the project pretty much in its entirety. That way, we can get through the growing season, you know, pioneer feed some of them, uh, depend on spring sales, so we're going to stay out of there hopefully until June.
Okay.
And then move in there afterwards to minimize their impact. But pretty much next week, we'll be starting up. We did meet with some of the businesses last week to give them an overview. Uh, flyers have gone out, and we do anticipate having another, uh, meeting with, with all the businesses in the next few weeks, once we have a little bit more specifics to give out to everybody.
Okay.
Uh, we will be sending a complete project update on all the projects via email out to everybody tomorrow morning also.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And then the only other thing I have on my list, um, something that maybe the manager can, can look into for us, you might have already gotten an email about this. Every year, there's a drive down to Springfield that is sponsored by the DuPage mayors and managers. It's coming up this year on Wednesday, April 13th, and was, it's a one-day event. In previous years, it's been a little longer than that, but this year, it's a one-day event. The purpose is to, um, allow staff, village staff and officials to drive down to Springfield and actually have face-to-face meetings with our legislators. We have a lot going on, and we've kind of talked about some legislative items up here last few months, so I wanted to just throw it out there and see if that's an opportunity again, um, for us to, to do that. If we are planning on going down this year and joining other municipalities, um, and, and just taking the opportunity to meet with our legislators, might want to start thinking about some of our legislative ideas and plans and what we want to, what we want to discuss with our legislators down in Springfield, so I just wanted to throw it out there, but something, looks like the deadline to register is March 25th, so.
Okay. Certainly look into that.
Okay. Good, great. Thank you. That was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Blanketsup?
Yeah, I only have one item tonight. Uh, I just want to encourage folks to, uh, utilize the businesses on, uh, South Villa Avenue. As you know, uh, construction's going to be going on. Actually, it officially started today. We got a memo on it, it was discussed already, but some of the business owners are concerned about their business, and rightfully so. So, you know, we always strive to shop Villa Park, but I think we need to strive even harder now to shop, uh, some of the businesses on Villa Avenue, so just keep it in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt Kornicki?
No reports tonight, thank you.
Attorney Freeman?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Manager Page?
Just one item, reminder of our budget workshop, it'll be March 21st. We'll be covering the capital budgets, uh, also, uh, the capital, uh, improvement plan if, if it's, uh, ready to go, and, uh, we'll be updating on the changes in the corporate fund as well. Those will be the three main items, uh, for the budget review on, uh, March 21st. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just have one thing. See the tie, Happy St. Patrick's Day. It's Thursday. I know the parades were Saturday. I hope anybody who went out to either the, the one down in the city or over in, at our neighbors Elmhurst had a great time, and everybody be safe, so. All right, and with that, we will recess to the committee of the whole. Item one, approved minutes of February 28, 2011, committee of the whole meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bolthus?
Second.
Questions or comments for the board? All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blanketsup?
Yes.
Trustee Bolthus?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes. Item two, building code update. Give that to the manager and to, uh, Schubert-Govin and everybody else involved.
Just a quick summary of, uh, the current building and, and fire codes that Villa Park uses are out of date, such as the 1999 Boca building and fire codes. While the village has periodically adopted local amendments, a comprehensive update of the codes is necessary in order to address the changing methods of construction, new technology, and new building materials that are now available. We also need to address new issues, new issues such as energy efficiency. Staff has been working on updating these codes with the help of the consulting firm of BNF Technical Code Services Incorporated, and some major, uh, changes are proposed that will be outlined this evening.
Well, we started working on the code update about a year and a half ago, and, uh, we've, uh, acknowledged the fact that our codes need to be updated. They are really outdated. Uh, we need to recognize the new methods of construction and the new, uh, technologies that are available. So we started looking into this about a year and a half ago. We were looking at 2006 and 2009 codes, and we decided to go with the 2009 to, uh, be as current as possible. One of the major changes in 2009 is the fire sprinkler ordinance, which we already have, so that was a hurdle that had already been crossed. Some of the, uh, major changes that, uh, we are going to be presenting to you tonight, one is, uh, we'll be adopting the existing building code. Uh, as you know, our community is a mature community where a lot of the structures are built, uh, and so the, a lot of the permits that we see come in are for remodel and repair and additions to existing buildings. And this code will allow a lot of flexibility to, uh, the architects and designers and the homeowners to, uh, have different alternatives to choose from rather than strictly abiding by the new code. Uh, in the plumbing code, PVC of a certain grade will now be, is proposed to be, uh, permitted underground. Currently, only, uh, it, it's something that's not permitted. We only have cast iron. Property maintenance code is another one that's being updated, and we will be taking the, uh, occupancy table forward from the 2006 code. Fire code, and I'll have the, the, uh, fire chief is here to talk about the two significant changes that are being proposed. With that, we did hire BNF consultants. Rich Piccolo is here tonight, who has been an enormous help. He's the one who actually went through all the grunt work of going, uh, section by section, line by line, uh, through the entire code and guiding us, uh, to what is appropriate and what's not, what other municipalities are doing, et cetera. We also have, uh, fee schedule updates that we will talk about separately, but if you could bear with us and go through the code update, uh, I will have Rich Piccolo come in here and outline some of the major changes, and then we can talk through any questions that you might have.
Good evening. Excellent, what, the, the manager stole my thunder. Everything I was going to say, he said, excellent, but really, the, uh, we update, we, we work with a lot of municipalities updating the codes. Of course, you know you were on a older Boca code. Problems with the older Boca code. There's no training available. It's old technology. There's things that are in the newer codes your older code didn't address, so when we update the code, we want to accomplish all those things. Give you a more current code. Your staff can be trained on the code. If you participate in the ISO program, you don't get any points if you have an older code more than five years old. So your change to the 2009 code will have, will set you for at least five years, if not longer. If you're not concerned about ISO, you can actually last longer. But when we went through the code, I mean, I, I wrote a memo here going through some of the, the major changes, which is, but just to generalize, it, what they do when they adopt the codes, when the, when the codes are updated, anybody can propose a code change. Only code officials can vote on those changes. So the code officials that work with it every day are aware of the problems, they're aware of the things where the code was lacking, and in some cases where the code was too overbearing, and they step back things, or they make it more user-friendly, or they work with areas where it caused a problem. One of the major changes for the Boca code was the, the wind protection. If you go back to the 99 Boca, it didn't have as good of wind protection requirements as the current code does. Wind protection just means you tie the roof to the top plate, to the wall, to the foundation. I'm sure you've all saw pictures of some of the hurricanes where the entire roof would blow off a house, where they have provisions to protect for that now. You say, "We don't have hurricanes here, but we have tornadoes." Lot of, lot of wind damage. So that's what the code does. It goes through, finds areas where there's things that were lacking or weren't as strong as it could be, and, and they fix that. One of the other changes that happened is they took the mechanical code and split it into two separate books. One book handles mechanical systems, one code handles fuel, gas appliances, like the furnace in your house, okay, or the furnace in a commercial building. Two separate code books was one of the changes. For the residential code, of course, the wind provisions will also apply to that. And if you look at, if you look at insurance company statistics, wind is actually one of the biggest losses that the insurance companies have to deal with. So the residential code, uh, uh, handles that. Uh, the, uh, the plumbing code, there was a few, there's a few changes in there. A couple of the big ones was that, like Schuber mentioned, uh, in the past, uh, you, uh, by local amendment, didn't allow PVC below grade. It was allowed by the Illinois Plumbing Code. It's used in, uh, almost every other municipality we have allows the use of PVC below grade. So we, 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 we say, "Look, everybody else allows it. We would suggest that you would allow PVC below grade." Not, the minimum schedule 40, so we're not talking about lessening the quality, but it's just more practical, more cost-effective, and lasts just as long as cast iron. Um, of course, the, uh, Airage Conservation Code is now state law. Um, we put it in there to make sure there was no conflicts. One of the changes is that we updated the National Electrical Code, but to the 2005 edition. There is a 2008 edition, but we went through the changes in the 2008 edition, and we felt that they're really oppressive. They, for example, for an entire house now, they require, i- if you go to, two year, two editions ago, they put the, uh, overcurrent protection, the arc fall protection in all the bedrooms. The 2008 requires it at every circuit in the house. So we felt it was better to stay with 2005 than I'd have to deal with that at this point in time. It's, they're not, it's not really a totally proven item, huge expense that, that we felt was, could be a little excessive. And I just want to reiterate one thing that Schuber said about the existing building code. Um, it has been widely adopted in the state of Illinois. It actually existed since 2003. Um, it was before that, in other formats, it had, uh, Boca always had one, but it was still never adopted very much in Illinois because it wasn't understood. It started on the East Coast where they have buildings that are 100, 150 years old, so when they want to rehab a building, you don't want to just throw the whole building out. This code gives the designer, the building owner, huge latitude, lot of choices they can make, and still wind up with a code-compliant building. It's not just, "You must do this." Okay, what it eliminates is knocking down buildings just because they're old. That doesn't make sense. They're still good structures. We don't have to meet the total current code on an existing building, but we want to make it safe, and that's what the, the existing building code does. And then we updated from the 2009 Fire Prevention Code, which was, let me just say that, just to illustrate the depth of changes, the 2009, I mean, the 1999 Boca Fire Prevention Code was 132 pages. The, the 2009 International Fire Code, it's not just fire prevention, it's a fire code, is almost 400 pages long. There's a lot of requirements for specific types of hazards that weren't in the older code. Major change, it provides you the, the, you and the fire department the tools to handle hazards when they come to town. That's, you don't want to allow them because you do, but it gives you what you need to make them safe for firefighters, for the building occupants, and for the entire town. So that's kind of the 25 words or less, even though I can't say much in 25 words or less, but what all the different code changes entail. Now, I don't think anybody has a specific question about a specific code, uh, that we wrote, or what's in a specific code. I'd be happy to answer those.
Board?
I have a question for Schubert.
Okay. Trustee Blanketsup?
Have we, uh, run these proposed codes by any of the home developers or commercial developers in Villa Park?
No.
Do we plan on getting some feedback?
Um, we discussed whether or not that should be done, and, um, I think it was felt that we need to, um, first figure out where the village wants to go. We already do get a lot of feedback, uh, from developers and, and contractors. Typically, the way things should move forward is presenting something, figuring out where the board would like to go with this, and if you want, uh, we can have a feedback session.
I prefer some feedback. I'm not versed in this area, and it just seems like, you know, there's going to be some added expense to their world, which will hike up prices to the consumer. And some of these codes are, you know, for life safety, and I understand that, and that's important, but where do you draw the line? And I think it's important that we get their feedback.
Our codes were so old, uh, 99 and 98, that there's no question that they needed to be updated. Actually, IBC is working on 2012 codes, uh, but we felt that we needed to go with something that has already been tried, uh, in other communities. A lot of communities have 2006. We went with 2009, um, and mostly the, the reason that the communities have not gone to 2009 is because of the fire sprinkler requirement, which we already have. So we looked at, and again, that, that was the whole reason for working with the consultants who, uh, has worked with many, many other municipalities to see what kind of experience, because they, these are the individuals who actually review, uh, a lot of the new buildings that come into town. We wanted to make sure that, uh, they are not, uh, excessive, uh, in terms of the requirements. And where we felt that they were excessive, we did, uh, take those out or tone them down.
So I can tell you, it's not my opinion, but I can tell you that a lot of developers will not do business in Villa Park because of our current sprinkler ordinance. They think that is excessive, and that's not me, that's not my opinion. So, and I don't know if we asked for their feedback or not. I know it's a life safety issue, and that's very, very important, but I don't know where we draw the line. There are sorts of developers that won't develop in Villa Park because of that added cost.
Fire chief is here to answer the sprinkler requirements, and yes, uh, there are a couple of changes being proposed in the fire sprinkler requirements in addition to what we already have. Uh, he can certainly.
So I would actually recommend that we try to get some feedback on, on this before
First of off, uh, first of all, uh, you know, there's a few things in here, but what specifically would you like me to speak to about the fire sprinkler ordinances?
I don't know. I think Schubert asked you to speak about it.
I would, actually, I would ask, um, uh, you know, and I was part of us first bringing sprinkler codes here. Do we become, you know, we have, we have some buildings in Villa Park that are 1,000 square feet, 1,200 square feet, some of our ranch houses. And adding the provision now that if somebody puts 1,500 square feet, they have to do a sprinkler throughout the whole house, what kind of cost would that be for somebody remodeling a house? Do we have any?
The cost for, and it, it all depends on, on material and, and
Right.
How they're going to do it. But on a remodel, and, and I bet Rich could speak to this better than I could, but it's probably about 350 a square foot. As proposed to new construction, which is probably now about a dollar 75 a square foot.
Okay.
The, the, um, intent of the amendment, as it stands now, we have, uh, a requirement for new residential and, and, uh, multi-family dwellings, townhomes, that the existing code requires sprinklers to be put in. That's not changing in the, in the current, or in the proposed codes. What is being proposed is that at some point, and, and obviously, it's up for discussion here, but at some point, at, the question is, at what point do we consider an old house a new house? Um, and it was decided that about 100% remodel probably should be considered as new. 1,500 square feet was also proposed for, you know, for larger houses. Somebody has a 5,000 square foot home, they, they put on 1,500 square feet, that would be considered new.
And I don't, and, and my personal thought is, somebody adding 1,500 square feet to 5,000 square feet, cost prohibitive is probably not even an option there. You're talking a 6,500 square foot house, that's one of our larger mansions out of Elmhurst.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be doing that.
Right. What I'm looking at is Villa Park missed sort of all the, all the redevelopment in the 90s, you know, all the tear downs, the buildups. We missed all that. Uh, if you look at our housing stock, our housing stock is smaller-ish sized houses, uh, decent-sized lots. My personal opinion, and talking to other people throughout the community, uh, is that we probably won't see the large McMansions again and the, the housing bubble go through. However, uh, I'm hoping, and I'm basing, uh, the future of Villa Park going to be on these rehabs and remodeling and adding an extra story, or adding a back family room with a second story and a dormer. And talking to some people who do developments and do construction, uh, I don't want to make it more difficult to do that here in Villa Park, and we end up missing the next wave of development because we're, we're adding something that other towns aren't adding. And I'm not sure where other towns are as far as all these sprinkler ordinances. I did read that Glen Allen is actually looking at increasing the square footage as their requirement. And I know Glen Allen was one of the first
Correct.
... to actually install the sprinkler codes. And actually, that's when it was myself, trustee Hensley, uh, President Stapesia, and trustee Illian, and trustee Vargas going through all this. We looked at Glen Allen as sort of our base model because they were one of the first in DuPage County, correct?
Correct.
So now that they're starting to look at possibly pulling back, and their houses are far larger than our houses as well.
What they have proposed is, uh, scaling back their requirement to 3,000 square foot house, which for Glen Allen is, is relatively small.
Right.
And their remodeling requirement, uh, for residential sprinklers is based on cost of the job. And depending if you use marble or pla- and, to me, that, that's what they decided, but the cost of the job may or may not have anything to do with the size of the job.
So if you can afford 50,000, they don't want to get you, but if you can afford 250,000, no problem.
I, I, I guess that is their logic. I, I don't know.
Okay.
Um, I, I can see this, that, that this is a balancing act, and I realize that, between, you know, life safety, moving forward, and the, and the, the way the building materials are now, um, if things were built like they were 100 years ago, or even 75 years ago with all solid wood, it wouldn't be such an issue. Uh, you know, in the, in the newer codes, a lot more things that are more cost-effective, but much more lightweight and, and, and subject to failure by fire, among other things, but water, or insects, or whatever. The danger to occupants, uh, from that, and also the, the danger of, of, uh, everything being made out of oil-based products, all the furniture is foam rubber, it's not made out of wood and cloth anymore. Fire models are outdated. Fires just, just move much more quickly, and buildings fall down much more quickly these days. So I understand that there is, there is this balancing act here, and it's certainly up in, you know, to the board's, you know, decision to, to figure what the citizens of this, of this, uh, you know, municipality are comfortable with.
Right.
And what the developers are comfortable with. And if, if 100% remodel, it, you know, is something that, that you, you feel can't be done, you know, maybe it needs to be changed, or, or at some point. We, we do have the 1,500 square foot in there now, or 100%, whichever is less, may go to 1,500 square foot, period. It, it's certainly something we can discuss, but I just wanted to give you the rationale of why we're, why we're doing this.
Okay. I definitely would like to discuss, and, and that's why I say, that's why when I first I definitely would like to discuss, and that's why I say, that's why when I first went through and I got the amulets fees mixed up with this, I definitely want to talk to you more on it because I really see us having an opportunity here as this next bubble comes. And not bubble, gosh, no bubble.
Not a bubble, a burst, we'll say.
The next burst comes in, the next boom comes in. I want Villa Park to be ready and to be prepared. And having updated codes, having done plumbing, for plumbing to be now allowed to use PVC is going to be extremely cost effective and be extremely pro-develop, pro-development and pro-contractor to allow that type of standard in. Cast iron is, A, very cost prohibitive, and B, a nightmare to work with. So it, you know, to utilize PVC now for a code takes a plumbing job that could be a four or five day process, doing it underground, and turn it into a day and a half. Cuts down a lot on the cost. I just don't want us to go through with the sprinklers and make it more difficult to go through, which is why I'd like to definitely sit and chat some more over where we're at on that.
I understand. That makes perfect sense.
Okay. Trustee Blackett's up?
I don't mean to put trustee Case on the spot, but since he is a developer...
I was going to butt in there soon as we got done.
Could you kindly...
Well, my question is now, 1,500 square feet, what happens if it's broken up 750, 750, considering you're doing a ranch? If you broke 750 square feet coming off this end of the house, then you got another 750 square feet coming off the other side of the house. Is that considered?
The intent of that revision would be, it would be considered 1,500 square feet.
Talk about the square footage.
Trustee Case, could you comment on the sprinklers and, I don't know if you can or not?
I think it's...
Hold on. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. The attorney, just so everybody could get where we're at. Right now, we're just looking at, it's a conversation about updating. So we're not going to take any votes. We're not moving anything forward. So I want to hear your opinion on this as well. But after that, what we may want to do is set up possibly a workshop at our meeting in April to go through a bunch of these things. And in that time, you and I can go over some sprinkler codes. Any of the trustees want to weigh in with the chief on what their thoughts are on sprinkler codes? I would recommend people make some calls and some conversations, do some research for other communities, and hopefully buy the workshop. And then we'll, we can button it all down at that meeting, at one of the meetings in April. But just so everybody knows, we're not voting on anything. This was just sort of an update and a presentation. All right. Mr. Case, go ahead. Trustee Case.
I think it's kind of low for a square footage to have it, personally. But, you know, like you said, nowadays, it's more about safety. But I'd like to see where the other towns sit and everything else. And I have done a little research with other contractors about the codes, which I'd like to leave alone right now until I do more research about it. And we'll go from there.
And there are, this is for a developer or a remodeler, there's a whole slew of things the village and that person or company can do to try to rein in costs and still have, you know, an appropriate level of life safety. And just a square footage requirement is not the whole package. There are things to look at that we may need to address, so.
And like I said, I'm not, I want the life safety issues in there, but I also want to make sure that we don't, you know, as, if you look back, hindsight is 2020. We missed it. And I don't want to miss it again. So I want to make sure that we've got everything right, and we've got everything solid, and that we're on top of this when this next wave comes through. Because it is coming through. You can see it slowly. You see a couple new, you see a new project up on North Avenue. You see a new project on St. Charles. You're going to see a second new project on North Avenue. They're slowly coming back, and you can see it in other communities as well. So I'd rather not miss it on the residential side as well because we do have a housing stock that desperately needs upgrade. We've got some, my house is one included, about 85 years old, that could use, that could use upgrading as well. But we have had some turnovers. We have some vacant properties that have been foreclosed on, that are primed for a developer to come in, buy and add 1,000 to 1,500 square feet on. And I just want to make sure that if we are allowing, if we are going to recruit those type of people, we're not making it cost prohibitive for them to where they go, you know, I'm just not going to make enough money, so there's no point in me doing it. And we end up having, you know, people buying foreclosures and just renting them out. Because that would be our worst case scenario, and we want to avoid that at all costs. So yes, I'd like to sit with that, and if we could do a full workshop on this, that would be great. Go right ahead.
Can I, um...
Trustee Boltes. Of course you are. I didn't finish it. I just said that's what I would like.
Now, is this, a look through here, is this residential or commercial that we have here?
It's residential and commercial.
Now, you know, we're talking here a lot about the 1,500 square foot in residential. Now, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I can agree with that, that 1,500 square foot is kind of a low number. Now, residential, commercial is another thing. I would, you know, think that any new construction, commercial building in Villa Park should be 100% sprinkled.
That is...
Right now, we have a...
Yes, that is one of the revisions of the code.
Right. So I'm okay with that. And the same thing with changes in any major remodeling or additions onto commercial buildings. 100% recycled. Is that what's in here too? Or does that, commercial buildings work on square footage also?
The commercial, well, there are a couple provisions in commercial buildings. One of them is part of the existing code that isn't, that isn't listed in the changes. But it's part of the existing code where, whereby if a occupancy goes from a less hazardous use group, use group, according to the Illinois, I mean, the International Building Code, now it's the Boca. But it goes from a less hazardous to more hazardous use group. Like it goes from a storage of steel rods to a condominium building. Oh, I won't say condominium, but a mercantile occupancy where they have a lot more people in there. Then that building would have to be sprinkled. That's one, that's one part of the remodeling code, I guess for lack of a better word. Also, the 1,500 square foot addition would kick in there.
Okay. So then that 1,500 square foot addition would kick in, have to be re, be sprinkled. But also, if they did double the size, then the whole place would have to be sprinkled in commercial, right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm okay with that. I think that's what we should do. But the square footage on the residential, we have to, we have to work that out. Because like the president said, somebody's got a small ranch house here in Villa Park, and they want to put an addition on the back and maybe throw up a second floor. We don't want to stop them from there or put any roadblocks in their way. So I think, yeah, we need to talk about that. Like you said, a workshop, I think it'd be a good idea.
Fantastic.
Absolutely. Any other questions for me?
Any other questions on the sprinklers for the chief while you got them up here? Okay. Schubert, back to you. Thanks, chief.
Another major component of our update was looking at our fee schedule. We did look at several municipalities to see where we stood in terms of our fees, and we were very, very low. Now, different communities have their fees structured differently, and how they calculate them is different. We wanted to make sure that we were comparing apples to apples when we were comparing our fees to one of the municipalities. And the way they're structured, it was hard to compare our fees, say, to Elmhurst because just the way they calculate is a little bit different. On the other hand, the way Lombard has their calculation structured is very similar to ours. So we did show, for the purpose of comparison, in your packets, you'll see a side-by-side comparison with Lombard as to what our current fees are, what Lombard's are, and what we are proposing. We do have information from other municipalities similar to this. And like I said, we discovered that our fees were really on the low end, reflecting fee structures from over a decade ago. And this doesn't even cover our administrative costs. Terry Knatt, who's our structural, electrical, mechanical inspector, and his inspection currently is at $25 an inspection, which doesn't cover any of, a very small part of his time.
Can I ask a question? How long is it, does an electrical inspection take?
How long does it take? It depends on the job. For instance, OTB, there's a new building. There will be several locations where it needs to, and several trips that need to be made as well.
It's a $25 fee total?
For inspection, yes.
Every time they go there, or just?
Per inspection.
Okay. All right.
Now, the plumbing inspection fees was increased in 2005 or '06, I think, to 50. But as you look at the fee structure and compare it, we were significantly lower than our surrounding municipalities. So what we did was propose a fee structure that takes us a little bit higher, in general, about 15% increase. However, we did not increase fees for simple permits like driveways and roofing and siding, that are our day-to-day permits in order to assist the residents deal with the current economic times. Those are staying the same. It's when a job is a little bit more complicated and involved, that's when the fee structure kicks in. And even with our increase, we will still be significantly lower than Lombard's fee structure. So that is all spelled out and included in your packets. We are hoping that if the number of permits, the trends stay the same as they have in the last few years, the revenues would again reflect the 15% increase in the fees. But again, the purpose here was not necessarily, increase in revenue was not our prime reason, but it was really to cover our own administrative costs. Because we should not be at, the village should not be suffering a time loss with the time spent in the inspections and administrative costs.
Any questions, comments? Trustee Blackett's up?
So Schubert, are you saying that you can calculate out that your time per hour versus our current schedule is not appropriate and we're losing money?
I did not calculate my time because I'm not the one doing inspections. However...
So you did calculate that out?
Yes. Terry actually did a pretty meticulous inventory. We took samples of several projects, different scales of projects too. We looked at the fees that were charged. We looked at how many inspections were made and the time spent and the fees that we collected. And based on that, we figured, okay, for a typical, this type job, how many inspections would it take and how much time spent? And then tried to come up with the fees and still tried to keep it reasonable so that we were not increasing them to, say, 50%.
So the current schedule today, we're losing money based on Terry's calculation?
Yes.
Okay. And just going up a few extra dollars to match Lombard, since we're using them as the measuring stick?
It would bring us closer to closing that gap, but...
Okay. So we're still losing money? I'm just trying to figure out how you're coming up with a number versus saying, well, Lombard's doing this, so we need to do that. We oftentimes hear about things and get proposals, well, Lombard does that, Elmhurst does this, we should do it.
They're using Lombard only as an example. We know that our fees are significantly lower. Lombard's fee structure was the closest to ours, which is why it is listed in here. Our fees are lower than any other municipality around us. So we know that we are, we do need to increase them. How much should they be increased? We use Lombard as a benchmark to make sure that we did not exceed their fees.
Do we take into account property value too, like the average property value in our town versus Lombard? Because their town is a little bit more rich than ours?
No.
Okay. So maybe we can do that too. The thing that I don't want to do is, I mean, some of these increases are nominal, but I don't want to price ourselves out of the market. I mean, if we still stay at a low rate, we could be the value in DuPage County for development and boast about that value to encourage developers to come to our town.
But that's been, that's been the case for the last 15 years with us being at the low end. But that has not been the reason for bringing development to town. Just having low fees has not brought us development, is what I'm saying.
Have we used that in our brochures or anything?
Oh, yeah.
We say in our brochures for residential development that it's, the cost for permitting is much less than surrounding communities. I'd like to see that in the brochure.
We have that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we do. But again, that has not been the impetus to bring development just because your permitting fees are lower. You know, there are other rationale for, that the contractor or developer chooses a location, not permitting fees.
Okay. Fair enough.
Other questions? Other comments? Trustee Case?
I'd rather move this to executive session and discuss this a little further.
Okay, yeah. No. What we'll probably do is take this to a, we'll do this, we'll do a lot more of this as a workshop. Again, this is not anything to vote on. We're not adopting these codes tonight. We're not moving anything forward from the committee of the whole. Take, take what you've got now. Take these, what you've got now. Go through them. If you have comments, questions, concerns, put down what they are. Have that laundry list. We'll look at, obviously, we're trying to finish up our budget on our next couple workshop sessions. But budget should be solidified by the end of this month, first meeting in April. Right, Vitas? Perfect. You'll have it done in a week. And then that way, we can utilize the workshop meeting in April to go through everybody's questions and comments and hit any, hit anything up on that and maybe make adjustments at that time. Or if we see anything else that's sort of out of whack, we can look at that as well.
So should we bring this back next meeting or in...
No, I would say let's do the workshop before we bring it back, which would be April 18th. So is everybody good with doing, going over the building codes and everything, especially with some revamped fire sprinkler codes on the 18th? Yes?
That's good.
And please, in the meantime, if you do have comments, questions, absolutely, feel free to...
If you have questions or comments, send them, send them forward, and let's try to get as much of this answered and get this as rock solid as we can and as good for the town and as good for developers as possible so that we have all this updated and ready to go for the next step in Villa Park. Good? Okay. Thank you, Schubert. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Very good job. Chief, thank you very much. All right. Item three, consider a resolution in support of an application for funding of the north side sidewalk project under the Federal Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement CMAC program. Senator Page.
Yes, the village wishes to submit an application for grant funding of the north side sidewalk project under the Federal Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement CMAC program. This project, as proposed, consists of the installation of new sidewalk in the north side of the village. The area bounded by Amitych Avenue on the north, North Avenue on the south, Harvard Avenue on the west, and Ardmore Avenue on the east. Village staff is requesting passage of a resolution in support of the project's application for grant funding.
All right. Questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. President?
Trustee Boltes?
This is a 1.12 estimated million-dollar project. And the 80% would be about $893,000, leaving a balance of $224,000 for the village to come up with. My question is, where are we going to get $224,000?
Vitas has an answer.
Well, first of all, this application is going five years out. The CMAC's cycle has changed now, so they're, they're going to be going ahead five years. So assuming this project goes three or four years from now, it'd either be taken from the sales tax revenue, which will be available by then, or through motor fuel tax money, which we will have accumulated by then.
We're going to accumulate motor fuel tax money, put it aside and not redo streets that are in bad condition.
We do not use motor fuel tax money now for, for street improvements. We use strictly our, our sales tax revenue.
Don't we fill out on a quarterly basis where our motor fuel money goes? I thought I saw streets on those reports that we sent to the state.
Primarily, we use it for reimbursing the, the street fund for snow removal and pavement repairs. It's... It's for in-house costs, snow removal, salt, pavement patching, things like that. When we have excess money, we apply it towards projects. So we did accumulate enough money, MFT money, to use as local match for the Roosevelt Road sidewalk.
Well, you know, I would rather accumulate money to repair the streets than to put some sidewalks. And I know they need sidewalks over there, they haven't had any sidewalks. But we've got streets that are falling apart that... Yeah, I know it's five years out, it's a long time, but anything can happen in five years. And if we go ahead with this now and say some of the engineering work is all... It gets done. And I assume that'd be like a process that would start before we actually get the grant or with the grant money?
Not necessarily.
Well, what happens if we're okay with this now and we apply for the grant and then five years or four years down the road, we decide we don't want to do the project?
Well, you don't have to do anything until you're awarded the funds. CMAC does cover engineering costs also. It was originally proposed to... This was all an in-house design. So basically, we're just going to sit on it until if and when we get funding. This is actually resubmitting. We submitted this two years ago and we did not get the funding. So we actually do not have to take any action until it actually gets approved and programmed.
If it gets approved, are we able at that time to say, "No, we changed our mind, we don't want to do it"?
You can change your mind anytime until the point that you actually sign a funding agreement.
Yeah, we had the same... Remember, we had to re-approve Roosevelt Road about a year and a half ago? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Two years ago, we had to re-approve doing Roosevelt... The sidewalks for Roosevelt Road, and we had applied for that. Heck, that original CMAC funding application was prior... Was six, seven years ago, is that correct?
I believe so. There was another project that we had applied CMAC funding for high-risk traffic signals, which we ended up declining.
Which we ended up going and applying and then turning down, remember? And that cost us nothing to do.
I remember that. I remember the Roosevelt Road project, though. If we had turned it down at that point, we would have had to recoup some... Repay some expenses that had been incurred.
There was some Phase One engineering that we would have had to...
Not a little amount of money, so...
There's less risk when you're doing it in-house, though, because you're not really out of pocket other than salaries.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Trustee Blanketup?
I do agree with Trustee Boltes's points and concerns. I have met with some citizens over on the North Side. In fact, I think you and I, Vitas, did a meeting with a citizen probably three years ago in...
On North Yale?
Yeah.
I believe so, yes.
And one of their biggest complaints was not having sidewalks. And it's a nice residential neighborhood, it's developed quite nicely. It still needs maybe some additional street work and whatnot, but I would support this as long as we're sure, once we sign that agreement for getting the money, the $893,000, we have a solid plan in place for the twenty percent that we had before Gopher. So I don't have any problem approving it and moving it forward. I just want to make sure that we're really cognizant or those who are up here at that future time really understand or are cognizant of, you know, once the agreement is signed on, you know, we owe the twenty percent.
I look at it the same way that I looked at the traffic light. We approved it a couple of times through the first phase just to see if the money would come through. And then when it finally came through, the straightening of the street and everything else just was not cost prohibitive. And we actually had come up with that the stop signs were working just as well and if not better than the traffic light would have. And also with the ending of Ardmore not being stretched all the way to Butterfield, not having the traffic light, being able to turn that down without it really costing the village anything was... Turned out to be not a bad thing. So I don't see moving this forward as a bad thing.
I don't have any trouble moving it forward now that I know that we can stop...
Turn it down, right.
Turn it down without any financial obligation on our part four years down the road. You know, we have an opportunity to say no.
And the other point is, we already have the application done from two years ago, so it's not a lot of work on our part to resubmit it.
See, already saved a buddy on the project. All right.
Mr. President?
Trustee Bowwinkle?
If we don't get this funding, are there other grants or other funding sources we can go after?
Well, CMAC's the basic one for sidewalks. That pays eighty percent, you can't get much better than that.
Are you hearing, you know, I guess we don't really know whether or not we have a good chance. It's just a matter of put it out there and it's nice to know we don't have a financial obligation, you know. We have to pay the $200,000 to come through, but we have a way out if we don't have the funds or whatever. Because it's, you know, it's hard to tell where we're going to be. And things are so tight right now, it's going to take us a few years to build the coffers back up, so...
We would not come back without a financing plan.
Yeah, definitely we need to have that. Okay, thank you.
All right, can I have a consensus to move this to the formal?
Trustee Blanketup?
Yes.
Trustee Boltes?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes, item four. Consider amendments to Section 25-337B of the Villa Park Municipal Code regarding charges for new water meters. Manager Page?
The village currently charges a fee for providing water meters to newly constructed buildings or to existing buildings connecting to the village's water or sewer system for the first time. These fees are meant to cover the labor and material costs of the new water meter, interface unit, and wiring. The current fee schedule is almost five years old and no longer sufficient to cover these costs. The proposed fee schedule would reflect current costs. The village would continue to maintain and replace worn water meters at its own expense.
Any questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. President?
Trustee Blanketup?
I'm probably one out of anyone up here who's against increasing fees. But it seems like we're reading quite frequently in our agendas how a lot of our schedules are way behind and they're dated and so on and so forth. I'm not encouraging increasing costs, but could maybe each department look at their fees in all areas so we can maybe do this across the board? Because it just seems like we're having this conversation weekly. I don't know if that would be a good project for the manager and the department heads, but maybe that's what I would recommend.
Thank you, Trustee Boltes. Blanketup? Sorry. Any other questions or comments for the board? All right, consensus to move this to the formal?
Trustee Boltes?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blanketup?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes, item five. Consider joint purchase of bulk rock salt through the State of Illinois Central Management Services Procurement Service Division. Manager Page?
During the course of an normal winter season, the Public Works Department uses approximately 1,300 to 1,500 tons of highway rock salt. The village purchases the rock salt through an annual agreement with the State of Illinois Procurement Services Division. The State of Illinois generally receives very favorable prices because of the large quantity of salt that it purchases. The village must submit its rock salt needs through a contract with the State of Illinois by March 18, 2011. The Street Forestry Division Superintendent has reviewed the contract requirements and recommends entering into a contract with the State of Illinois for 1,300 tons of highway rock salt. $99,000 is proposed for fiscal year 2011/12 on Street Division Account Number 1052527341 for this purpose.
Questions or comments for the public? Questions or comments for the board? And Dan Sullivan, our superintendent, our Street and Forestry Superintendent is here to answer any questions. Any questions or comments from the board? I've got it. Dan, how much did we purchase last year?
$12,093 tons.
$12,000 or...
$1,293 tons.
Okay, what... How many... How much did we use?
We've got about 100 tons in inventory right now.
So we did pretty well as far as our... And this was a pretty severe winter overall. I know we normally carry over. Do we usually carry over a significant amount, or no?
We have whittled away at some of our inventory the last five or six years.
Okay.
We normally have about 1,000 tons in inventory and we probably have about 600 tons in inventory right now. So we have whittled away at it because of the severity of the winters.
Are we planning... Do we want to... I guess the question is, do we want to bulk that back up?
I would think eventually. I'm hoping that we actually finish the season with that 100 or 150 tons that we have.
Okay.
And if we continue, you know, managing the salt and not doing side streets all the time, hopefully, we can continue to build on that inventory.
Okay. Speaking of, what were we probably going through when we were doing side streets at every event and everything else?
Between 18 and 2,000 tons, so we...
So we've saved ourselves a significant dollar amount?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And we don't foresee any price gouging like we had... What was that, Jeff, two years ago that we asked for the investigation? Was that two years ago that they price gouged everybody?
It was two... Three years ago.
Three years ago?
We paid over $120 a ton while neighbors around us were paying us. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for the board?
Mr. President?
Trustee Davis?
Dan, tell me we're done with the snow.
We're done with the snow.
Thank you.
Case closed. Trustee Blanketup?
Just for point of reference, Dan, how many snow events have we had this year? And how many did we have last year?
I can get you that information. I know we've had over 44 snow events this year and we had 46 last year.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I want.
But we had the big one this year.
The big ones, right. And another, just comment about this. There's some towns or municipalities in the state of Vermont that actually canceled their salt and their citizens or their municipality has suffered pretty significant car accidents because of it. So though we're rationing our salt, we are salting our main arteries. And I know that, you know, the citizens of Villa Park, some do complain that all the streets aren't salted, but I believe you all guarantee that you're two blocks away from a main artery that is salted, so...
This is the second full year that we've put this into effect and the complaints really haven't been there.
Yeah.
So... And we are investigating beet juice and they'll have that report next week.
Okay, great, thanks.
So there are some other things that we might implement into our salting policy.
And I think it... Last year, it was a new program and everybody was sort of freaked out. But I think this year, we've proven the cost savings on it. We've proven that the staff can manage... Can manage making sure the stop signs get done, making sure the hazardous corners get done. We've got the system in place that if people see a dangerous spot, even if it isn't on the original, they know who to call and how to get that information and that can get accomplished. And I think realistically, you look 30 years ago, they didn't salt side streets ever. I think it's how I learned how to skitch homes. Back in the day. But, yeah, I mean, it seemed that was never, you know... It's sort of a luxury that due to the economy kind of has to... Had to go away. Okay. Any other questions or comments for the board?
Mr. President?
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Thanks, by the way, for looking into beet juice and pickle juice. I know it sounds really crazy, but it is, believe it or not, another option that you can consider supplementing with the salt that doesn't wear and tear on the roads, on the cars. It sounds crazy, but it's, believe it or not, there's a lot of municipalities out there that are working on it, so... Thanks for looking into that.
Yeah, I'll have a report for you next week. There isn't a real lot of good, hard data yet, but there are some states that are actually doing... They're into their... Finishing their second year, complete year of doing it.
Did you look into New Jersey? There's some counties in New Jersey, actually, that are doing it.
I've read the DOT for Ohio and for Michigan have... This is their second complete year of using a lot of the product.
And also, I've asked some other folks that I know out in the field that have done reports and things of that nature regarding the use of beet juice and pickle juice in DuPage County and other areas in Illinois. So I'm waiting for that information as well. And once I get the information, I'll share it.
Sure, that'd be great.
Doing some research.
So the future is...
I don't know about ranch dressing, but I know it sounds crazy.
So don't eat the yellow snow or the red snow.
But, you know, we're kind of in a position where it doesn't hurt to look at what our other options are. You know, to supplement, it may not completely get rid of salt, but it's something to at least consider.
And it's an environmental issue, too.
It is. It, you know, curbs and things, we've got a lot of chewed-up curbs and things like that, not only from cars hitting curbs, but a lot of it has to do with the salt just wearing down the roads and the cars and things like that, so... Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Trustee Davis?
Out in the country, we use cinders.
Thank you very much, Trustee Davis. Can I have a consensus to move this to the formal, please?
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blanketup?
Yes.
Trustee Boltes?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes, item six. Consider license agreement with property owner at 900 South Illinois Route 83, Walmart store number 1737-06 for installation and maintenance of an irrigation system in the right-of-way. Manager Page?
Walmart store number 1737-06 is located at 900 South Illinois Route 83. There is an existing parway east of the Walmart store adjacent to the frontage road. The property owner wishes to install an irrigation system in the parway, which is partially in the right-of-way. A license agreement would be needed to grant the property owner permission for the proposed installation. Public Works management staff has no objection to the proposed license agreement, provided it is understood that the licensee is responsible for the removal... The removal of the irrigation system temporarily, if needed, in the event the village needs to perform work within the license right-of-way.
Any questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments from the board? Consensus to move this to the formal?
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blanketup?
Yes.
Trustee Boltes?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes, item seven. Consider a resolution authorizing the submittal of an application to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, DCEO, for funding of a local share for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP, and authorizing a representative to sign grant documents for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP. Manager Page?
The village's staff has identified two properties, 29 and 59 South Monterey Avenue, for the property buyout program. Both properties are located within a 100-year floodplain and had multiple repetitive losses due to surface flooding. Total estimated cost of the project, which includes buyout and demolition, is $645,820. The village has already obtained a commitment for partial funding at 75% under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP. Funding for the local share, 25%, may be available from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, known as the DCEO, under the Community Development Block Grant disaster recovery program, so...
Any questions or comments for the public? Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. President?
Trustee Boltes?
The same question.
Yeah.
Where are we coming up with the $161,000 that may be available from the Department of Commerce?
Several options. Number one, we can withdraw.
So we do have a withdrawal time?
Yes, we check with the... With IEMA on that option before we put this forward. The second option would be to make up the difference either through in-kind contributions. Under this grant, they will allow in-kind contributions and/or a reduction in the sale price of the home. So basically, the seller can absorb some of that and supposedly take a tax deduction for it. So there are other options besides withdrawal in this case.
Okay, so we're not locked in at this point. Somewhere down the line, though, we would have to make that decision if we're going to proceed?
Well, we are executing the grant agreement. So we can not do anything with it and then withdraw it later. You know, the intent is to execute the agreement, submit the other application, and then wait.
Okay, as long as we wait, because we don't have that kind of money.
We will wait.
Okay.
Questions, comments for the board?
Mr. President?
Trustee Davis?
Is it possible to get a breakdown on these two properties and what these expenses are?
Can we get that?
I don't see what the house value is. I don't think the demo is...
Oh, okay, that's all detailed in the application. I can get you a copy of the actual application.
That's a lot of money for two houses in this market. And I understand it also includes the demolition and all, but...
Right, it includes a lot of things that the federal government told us we had to put into the application. So I will get you a copy.